I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 to order. Uh, this evening, we will have our, a local gentleman here, Emmett Boiler from, uh, you have to tell me what troop, I forgot already. Four fifty-eight, uh, and he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so please rise and join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Emmett. Emmett is a first-class scout, and he is working on his eagle badges, and had an opportunity to, uh, be interviewed with him, uh, last week, so thank you again for coming, and he's performing some more work on his badges, uh, this evening, joining us, so, thank you. Uh, first item up, uh, the approval of the agenda, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I move the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. Move on to presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. We have none this evening, we'll move on to item four, uh, three, uh, I'm sorry, four, response to public comment, which I understand we do not have any, uh, outstanding public comments to respond to. Move on to item five, public comment, anyone wishing to come before council at this time may do so. Uh, please state your name and address at the podium, and then state your question or comment for us. Again, seeing no one making a mad dash to the, uh, podium, I will consider the public comment period closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda, item six, we have items six A through P. These include bill listings, minutes from the March fourth, regular and work sessions, a $500 donation acceptance from Dakota Electric for our park and rec safety camp, as well as an, uh, an additional $500 from XL Energy, again, for the safety camp. We have our 2023 interfund transfers, uh, we have requests from Spectral Alloys for approval of their third edition final plat, acceptance of the Public Street and Utilities Greystone Eighth Edition, the election ordinance amendment, donation from Dakota Electric Arbor Day for $500. Again, this is for our annual trees. Uh, the lifetime facility, we have a change order four before us this evening, request by Maplewood Development for Amberfield sixteenth additional plat, the approval of contract amendments for professional service for additional work by WSB, awarding contracts for approximately $600,000 of work at the fire station facade repairs, awarding county, state highway, forty-two trunk water main PRV, um, installation, and then the municipal state aid, street designations for Driver Avenue and, what's the other one there? This, uh...
Uh, Boulder Trail.
Boulder Trail, alright, so, council, anyone wish to pull any item for further discussion, comment, or information? Seeing none then, would someone like to move the consent agendas, items A through P?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Essler, second by Klimpul, roll please.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
That completes six A, uh, through P, five zero. Move on to our public hearing this evening, we have a liquor license amendment for Los Tortillas Mexican Restaurant. And, let's see, is that coming with you, Ms. Fosbien?
Yes, it is.
Alrighty, city clerk, please.
Alright, thank you, mayor members of the council, so before you tonight, we have a request from Los Tortillas Mexican Restaurant, which is located at one five zero five one Crestone Avenue. They have submitted an application to amend their current on-sale liquor license and special license for Sunday liquor. Under city code, an establishment must apply for an amendment when expanding the license premise, and a public hearing is also required per city code. The request is specifically to expand the permitted license area to allow for an outdoor patio, which will seat approximately forty people. City council, uh, had approved a conditional use permit allowing the outdoor seating, and the patio, um, has since then been completed since this past December. Since then, our city official, building officials have also approved the patio, and it is ready for use. As required for a, uh, public hearing, a notice of this hearing was published in advance in the official newspaper, and as of today, no comments have been received from the public to date. So before you tonight, we have, uh, first, we require to open the public hearing, and then, second, pending any comments from public or city councils to take action on adopting the resolution approving this amendment for the on-sale liquor license and special Sunday license, following this approval here tonight, then the state would be notified of this amendment, and then the amendment would be effective immediately.
Alrighty, any questions for the clerk from council? Seeing none, we will open up the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so, come forward, state your name and address at the podium. Floor is open. Going once. Twice. Alright, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second to close the public hearing. Roll, please, I guess. I don't know, otherwise, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the public hearing is closed, uh, we'll turn back to council, any questions for staff?
Nope.
Nope, only, um, just want to say, very excited to see the new patio and, um, another small business succeeding and expanding in this town, so, it's exciting.
Yeah.
I happened to eat there, uh, Sunday evening, and I was disappointed it wasn't open yet.
Right?
So, uh, I spoke with the owner, Ryan, and, uh, yes, they are looking forward to that, and should have a, between now and Cinco de Mayo, should actually have some good weather maybe out there, ready, so...
Yeah, well, and the addition of, I mean, you go there a lot of times, and it's, it's packed, so the addition of forty, you know, more seats, that's substantial, so...
And I guess just for, um, residents that may be watching, uh, this patio is basically an extension out in front of the store, uh, restaurant, uh, takes up some parking, but that parking is not, uh, uh, affected by, um, our number counts or anything, there's plenty of parking there, and so I'm sure they'll look forward to lots of business.
Mm-hmm.
Would someone like to...
I'll make a motion.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for Los Tortillas Restaurant, allowing operation of an outdoor seating or dining area for eleven or more seats, subject to conditions.
I'll second.
A motion by Tyson, second by Klimpul, roll please.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
That passes four zero, uh, completes our seven A public hearing. This evening, we have no unfinished business, we'll move on to item nine, new business. First item up is Talimore Park, general improvement bids.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, council members, um, tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we are looking at bids for the general improvements at Talimore Park. Talimore, uh, development is, I guess it's easy to describe it as being north of County Road Forty-two from DCTC, and about as far east as you can get with residential development in Rosemount right now, and so, we are looking at developing a 1.5 acre park. It's a smaller mini-park, um, to serve kind of that local area. Um, the, the, the plan includes a playground, a basketball court, a putting green, some general landscaping, a pollinator garden, and some sidewalks. The engineer's estimate for the project was 346,119 dollars and ninety cents. Um, that, uh, is coming from the park improvement fund to pay for that. The, the bids that we're asking you to look at and approve tonight do not include the playground or the sun shelter portion of the park. That is being done separately, like we always do, where we involve our youth commission, our parks commission, the neighborhood, and then we bring that back to the council to approve at, at the very end, before we order that equipment. So tonight, uh, looking at the bids, uh, we put this out to bid following state guidelines. We received ten bids for the project, the low bid was from Shoreline Landscaping and Contracting out of the West Metro, uh, their bid price was 286,354 dollars and eighty-eight cents, and we are recommending, uh, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission and staff, that you would, uh, consider accepting these bids and awarding the contract to the low bidder. And...
Do you have a, uh, picture of where it's located, the location?
Yes, I do, if I can get a little help from the, the folks over at the, uh, table. And then, let's see, we need to...
Zoom it up.
Zoom in on that.
There we go.
So you can see outlined in yellow is the area where the, the park is located. Um, on the north side and on the, uh, west side is single-family residential, and then on the south side is more high-density townhomes. Uh, this road right here, uh, is County Road Forty-two, this road here is Akron Avenue, and this is Conamera. So that's the actual location of the, of the neighborhood where this park is going to go, and then this is the actual, uh, plan, the, the concept plan, um, and the park is being built just as how you see it. As I mentioned, the playground equipment and the actual sun shelter structure is not part of this bid package, but will come, uh, back to the council on a later date. So, one of the things that we did, we did get, uh, a recommendation, uh, at the youth commission, was to actually look at putting like a, the, the request was more for a, a putt-putt golf course, and we settled on starting with just one putting green at a park where if mom or dad or grandpa or grandma come and bring, you know, kids to the park, and they want to bring a golf club and a golf ball, they can sit and kind of work on their putting game as the kids are playing, and so, uh, that's why we put that close to the playground, um, and that, like I say, came out of the youth commission, that was a year ago, I think, that came out of the youth commission.
Yeah, I think she's on her second year, the, the young lady that brought that forward is, um, something, and so this was certainly, uh, appreciate being able to, uh, respond to that, uh, request. If we find this to work really nice, maybe we'll continue providing some more opportunities.
Yeah, we've talked about a par-three putt-putt course somewhere maybe, and starting to work on something a little bit different, but this is to get us started.
I think, uh, and appreciate that, uh, again, from our youth commissioners to be able to come up with ideas, and they've done this before, they, uh, were actively engaged in our skate park.
Yep.
Uh, was another example where, uh, our youth commissions are, uh, bringing ideas, the hammocking, I think is another one, uh, deal in the...
Yeah, and this park does have, uh, you can look and see, but there's a hammock area right here where we'll be putting in, and, and there's a, there's a cutout of it, so we'll be putting in hammock posts into the, into the park plan for teenagers and other people to use.
The youth are having their opportunities realized, so I appreciate that, council member.
Uh, one quick question is, um, you know, on the Flint Hills Shelter, they have a really nice kind of bike station, but, but is this planning on having, or are they talking about doing any kind of, because that Greenway Trail will be coming past this, won't it?
This, this area does not get, uh, recognized as close by the Greenway Trail.
Okay.
Dunmore Park, which is actually out to bid right now, will have a Greenway show that runs adjacent to it, and that'll have another bike fix-it station.
Perfect, okay.
Other questions from council? Alright, seeing none, uh, anyone like to move the recommended action?
I'll make a motion to accept the bids for Talimore Park and award the project to the lowest bidder, Shoreline Landscaping and Contracting for a bid price of 286,000, 354 dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
I have a motion by Essler, second by Tyson, roll please.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul? Aye.
That passes four zero, completes item nine A. Move on to nine B, request for Independent School District 196 for approval of rezoning of the site from AG to R1 low density. And we have up our planner. Let's see if I can dig this thing up. There, so Ms. Hogan, please.
Alright, thank you, mayor and council, um, so, a little bit of a summary of the request, so the applicant is requesting the following approvals to construct a new elementary school on a 34.51 acre site west of Akron Avenue and south of Bonheur Path. Uh, they are asking for rezoning of the site from AG Agricultural to R1 Low Density Residential, uh, minor subdivision, and as well as a conditional use permit. So, um, little aerial view of the site location, so you can see the site is located uh, south of Bonheur Path and west of Akron Avenue. The land currently is vacant and is surrounded by residential development. There is also the railroad tracks that follow along the southern boundary as well. Uh, so a little overview of the rezoning, so the applicant is requesting that rezoning to R1 Low Density Residential, the zoning is in line with the future land use designation of the site, which is that LDR Low Density Residential. Um, the need to change that zoning is due to because, um, elementary schools are not in allowed use within the agricultural zoning district, but they are conditional use within the R1 Low Density Residential, um, zoning district. Uh, so, a little overview of the minor subdivision request, so a minor subdivision, um, process is a plating alternative that, uh, combines the approval of the preliminary and final plats into a single process, currently the site is unplatted, but city did recommend, um, the applicant plat the area to clean up the boundaries and easements located on the site as well. Uh, so a little overview of the site plan, so like I had stated, the, um, property is 34.51 acres. Uh, the site will contain a main elementary school on the northern portion of the site, and as well as two parking lot areas, so you can see on this site plan that eastern parking lot area will be the main entrance, and also the main lot with that, and then the parking lot to the southwest will be the bus lot and also the secondary lot area. Um, proposed for the site is a playground area, which you can see is going to be located west of the school, and then a hardcourt area and a ball field, which will be south of the school that you can see located, um, on the site plan on the western portion of the site. There is one access point to the site, which is located off of Ardro Avenue and Killmore Trail, which comes south off of Bonheur Path. Uh, there is also a network of sidewalks and trails that are shown throughout the site, which will provide access to the playground area, hardcourt area, ball field, and also the main building as well. Uh, so a little overview of the traffic study, so, um, the applicant did submit, um, that information, which was an attachment with this, um, staff report, so, um, some staff comments, um, from that report is there's adequate space for internal, um, space internal to the site to contain drop-off and pickup, additional traffic in peak hours do not substantially impact the level of service provided by the intersections at Bonheur and Ardro, or, um, Bonheur and Akron, and no changes to that intersection, to the intersections are needed at this time. And then the ci- city and school district will need to continue to collaborate on examining and developing plans for pedestrian safety along Bonheur Path, and then we'll also need to continue to work with Dakota County to address the same with Akron Avenue as well. A little overview of the landscape plan, as well as park dedication, so landscape plan, um, does show 311 trees, uh, throughout the proposed site, which does meet that minimum requirement for replacement, and then also does show 160 foundation plantings, which also meet the requirement as well. And then the city's park and recreation department did review the submitted development plans, and is, uh, recommending that park dedication not be collected due to all the public recreation spaces that are located on the site. And then here are a few of the architectural drawings, um, so the principal building will be a mixture of brick, uh, precast wall panels, and ornamental, uh, metal panels. Um, the applicant did state that this proposed school will have a similar look to the newly-built East Elementary, um, in, um, Lakeville, which is south of County Road Forty-six. Then a little overview of the floor plan, so there is thirty-eight, um, rooms proposed throughout the building, and, um, there will be about 638 students proposed, um, to be housed throughout the school as well. So there are three motions before the council today, first one will be a motion to adopt a resolution approving a minor subdivision for Rosemount School District Third Edition, subject to conditions, a motion to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance B, city of Rosemount zoning ordinance to change the zoning of the site from AG Agricultural to R1 Low Density Residential. And then following motion, or the, um, last motion will be to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an elementary school to be located on the Rosemount School District Third Edition. I do know representatives with the school district, as well as their architect, and also a representative, uh, with STANTEC, who was a third, um, party that did, um, the traffic study is here as well, so if you have questions for them, they are here, or if, um, you have any questions for me, I am able to answer, um, as I can.
Okay, we'll open up the Florida council, any questions?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, and maybe this is for the, the, the representatives here, but the, about the traffic study?
Yeah.
Um, specifically, I'm just looking at, it says it does not need any further adjustment to the road, working with the county from the traffic study, do, can we have a little bit more information on that, or...
Yeah, I know, um, I'm sure our public works director can speak on that, and also the, um, the, um, representative with STANTEC, I know that they wrote the study, so they have a little more context than, um, we do at least, so...
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Who wants to start? I'd rather, yeah.
I'll, I'll fill in gaps.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, good evening, my name is Ed Terhar, I'm a traffic engineer with STANTEC, we're located at one Carlson Parkway in Plymouth, Minnesota. Uh, what was your question?
So my, my question is, you know, obviously with the school and coming to a busy interaction, uh, intersection with all the different, you know, building and construction that's going on in that area, just the concern about traffic flow, you, um, so the study was done, there was no need for a roundabout or anything at this time?
No, not at this time, all of the movements operated acceptable levels of service during both the AM and the PM, and we also accounted for other development in the area in the short term, um, that was, uh, recommended by the city to include, uh, in that area, so...
Okay.
That is true, there are no improvements needed at those intersections.
Okay, was there, um, so even at the peak time, like a drop-off in, in the beginning of the morning and everything like that, there's no, there's no request for it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, can you explain to what extent does that traffic study also account for, um, forecasted pedestrian traffic? I know we've talked at length about where the pedestrians may actually be coming from, so, can you speak a little bit about that and pedestrian safety too?
Sure, so as far as the actual number of pedestrians, that's not something that we, that we tried to estimate, it's going to really depend on how the school operates, how many kids are bused, how many get dropped off, how many are going to be walking close by. Those things are a little hard to anticipate at this point, but I do agree with you, there will need to be further look at those intersections, especially, um, Bonheur and Ardro, you know, on the west side, um, where there, there, you know, there's a logical crossing point. Right now, there's sidewalk on both sides, and there isn't a, a striped crosswalk, so, there should be further look at that, as, as this continues to develop, I agree with that, there are devices and, um, you know, facilities that can be put in for crosswalks, you know, your typical striping, your signing, but then as there, as you have farther to the west, there is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon that's activated by a pedestrian, and those are things that can be looked at, I'm not saying that that's the solution here, but I think those are kind of in the toolbox...
Right.
For this area, the Akron intersection is a little more complicated, that involves the county, and I know the school district met with the county last, earlier this week, or earlier last week, and they can talk about that, but the county does have a process to look at, you know, that intersection or other locations that make sense along that corridor, and they have their own ideas for that, so...
Well, we agree with that.
Well, they have, yeah, they have a process, and you need to follow, you know, I guess you need to follow.
And part of the reason to have you come up and speak to this is just, um, you know, we think this is great, we, we love the addition of the elementary school, but safety is obviously a, a number one, um, priority here, and, and one of the things, when you're looking at that intersection, because it is, you know, going to be a busy intersection, just if, if, is there, you know, a possibility of look ahead to do this now instead of after the fact, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think...
So just trying to be proactive since, before construction or anything, you know?
I think that is, that would be...
That's working with the county or whatever.
Certainly would be wise, I think that process has been started with the county already, and I think that's going to continue. Once again, I think the difficulty is trying to estimate the pedestrians that are going to be there. You know, are, are there going to be pedestrians, and I, I, I understand trying to be proactive, but you're just kind of shooting in the dark at this point to try and determine where people are going to be.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I certainly think that there should be a continued process, though.
Okay, and, and maybe just to follow up to that, and, and maybe the other representatives can speak to this, but, um, with, with East Lake, was there any kind of, I mean, was there a need for a roundabout there, or have you seen any changes there?
Where was that?
The, the other elementary school in Lakeville that was referenced earlier?
East Lake.
Oh, I wasn't involved with, I wasn't involved with that.
Okay, no issue, Mark.
Um, Mark Stotts, I'm with District 196, um, so in response, I, I guess going back to, you know, we're looking at the, the walking routes as they pertain to, to, uh, kids and parents getting to the school, we do know that there's three really busy roads there, and chances are probably pretty good that we're going to declare Bonheur Path a hazardous route, Akron Avenue will be a hazardous route, and then to the south with the railroad tracks, that would be a hazardous route. So, that being said, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the students that attend school at that building are going to be bused. Um, that is many times our solution when we have hazardous routes there, even though they live under the one-mile limit, um, we would still offer busing to all those students, so, um, we're hoping that helps, obviously student safety is like top priority for us, as well as the city, and, uh, we'll be studying all these issues, um, as we move forward. And as was mentioned, we met with the county last week, and so, they're aware of the situation, we haven't developed any definitive plans at this point, but, uh, hopefully we can work on that prior to the school opening, so...
I think one of the things that, um, I think we as council have, have run across, particularly with the county, but, uh, recognizing that there's a different timeframe, and so we've struggled to try to make things happen in a more timely manner, so that we're not doing a go-back for some reason that is even more disruptive.
After the fact?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we're trying to be proactive to the point where, you know, leading with positive intent, safety being the priority, if there's something we could do now, I guess...
Yeah.
Right.
Um, the, the other thing too is, um, all good intentions, I, I understand, you know, trying to bus the kids there, but there will be those that live in and around there, and they'll want to walk.
Right.
Uh, or ride their bikes or whatever. Um, and so I think strongly to, uh, certainly in our case with on Bonheur, working with the city, but also the county on Akron, is to come up with, uh, I, I think there's some funding mechanisms through Safeway, um, Way to Schools, that I think...
Yeah, safe routes to school.
You know, safe routes to school that...
Yep.
I, I suspect you could take the lead on in trying to obtain some of those funds, particularly for these type of roads, as well.
We are exploring all the options available to us prior to the school opening, so...
Appreciate that, and then, uh, what, what's the anticipated timeframe for this being opened?
Um, fall of 2025, so, um, pending approval tonight, uh, we're looking at breaking ground this spring, and then it would be ready fall of 2025.
Great, got a name yet?
Pardon?
Do you have a name yet?
Elementary number twenty at this point.
That's a great answer.
Rolls off the tongue.
Council member.
Yeah, so I, I think we all appreciate your sentiment, I think you used the language, they have their own ideas, um, the county, at the county level, and again, you know, what's already been expressed here is, we, we, we meet with the county on a regular basis, as you might imagine, traffic and, and traffic control is a pretty regular topic for us. Um, and, and we do find at times that they're not out in front of it enough, you know, looking ahead to what the, uh, upcoming, e- e- even when projects are approved, you know, so they're approved, it's, it's imminent that these developments are going to happen.
Sure.
Uh, so, i- if you guys are, you know, if there's anything we can do to help your cause, uh, to get out in front of it, uh, because we just met with them two weeks ago, and we expressed our concerns, uh, we expressed our concerns very, very vocally, um, about that we feel like we're, 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 we're going to be playing catch-up here, as opposed to, you know, their ideas, their different ideas are usually waiting for actual traffic counts, as opposed to projecting what traffic counts will be, so anything we can do to help in that, in that manner would, I mean, we're happy to help.
And, you know, we really appreciate that, we're not shy about asking for assistance from... from your staff either, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had many meetings with your folks, and they've been extremely helpful through this entire process. And we just, hopefully we can keep the ball rolling and like you said, be on, you know, be proactive when it comes to safety measure, measures instead of wait until the school is open and then decide to do something.
Perfect. That's our, that's our goal.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Edgar, did you have any comments? I know you're just sitting at the edge of your seat.
Yeah, well, these gentlemen covered it quite well, and I think the supplemental questions that you asked spurred some of the things I was gonna say. I, I don't want folks to get concerned that because we don't have the exact detailed solution of what we're gonna do tonight, that that means we're dismissive of this whole thing. We're, we're forging ahead with digging into what is needed to come up with those solutions. So, some of the stuff that Mark mentioned, the, the busing routes and the populations and where they're coming from, those are all inputs to determining what the, the right solution, given the context, will be. And I, I feel very strongly that, at least on the city's street side, the Bonheur side, we have ample time to get through that and get to what the solution will be and implement it in sequence with the school opening. That's, that doesn't worry me. Obviously, we don't have control of county timelines, but we're, we're in their ear quite often on these things. We've already had a couple primer conversations about this. We have another meeting scheduled with them in about a week. So, we're gonna stay on top of it, and rest assured, we'll be pressing pretty hard.
Yeah. Well, and we, we, we're, you know, I think we're well aware too that you, it's great that you guys are working with staff so well, but, but you guys are also very, very swamped with a lot of the other things that are going on. So, it's great that the Bonheur piece is, it's, it's the Akron piece that I'm, that I'm concerned about, because I just think the traffic with all the building that's going on, you know, east of town, that, if we can be proactive with the county. So it's good that you have that meeting coming up. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, there's nothing else. I don't know if you each wanna take a motion and?
Yep. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a minor subdivision for Rosemount School District Third Edition, subject to conditions.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, Essler, second by Klimpel. Roll please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpel?
Aye.
Weizenzell?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance B, City of Rosemount zoning ordinance, to change the zoning of the site from AG agricultural to R-one low-density residential.
Second.
I'll second. Oh.
That's fine.
You beat me.
Motion by Klimpel, second by Essler. Roll please.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpel?
Aye.
Weizenzell?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an elementary school to be located on the Rosemount School District Third Edition.
Second. Motion by Tyson, second by Weizenzell. Roll please.
Klimpel?
Aye.
Weizenzell?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
And that completes each of the motions, passing four zero, one, two, and three completes not business, new business item nine B. With that, we'll move on to announcements, city f, city staff updates. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. I'm gonna throw the mic to Chief Dulstrom tonight for a report on his recently acquired second career, maybe, so.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. I think before I give an update on an event last night for Culvers, Emmett, you wanna come back up here? I got something for you. You did such a good job. I wanna give you one of our challenge coins. So, stood up here all by yourself and did that announcement. I've seen full troops have to do that, so nice work on that, right? There you go. Alright, so we got a couple events coming up here in April that I want to talk about. One is the police and fire hockey game. So that's gonna be on April sixth at the Rosemount Ice Arena. And last night, we did a fundraising event for that. So Amanda and Tony at Culvers in town, excuse me, were nice enough to allow our police and fire to serve food. So, we, we put it out on social media, and we were the runners of the Culvers out to have righted people in the dining room as well as in the, the lineup outside. And we all found it to be a very good time. So it was, some, some of the looks on people's faces when they turned and saw a uniform handing my bag was, was pretty awesome. But it was, it was very enjoyable, and thanks to the staff and, and some of our friends and family that showed up to support that. So, I believe we, they donated about five hundred dollars because of that event, and everything is going to the Minnesota One Hundred Club. The Minnesota One Hundred Club is an organization that serves Minnesota first responders and their families who are either injured or killed in the line of duty. So, all that money that is raised on April sixth, along with that money last night from Culvers, there's been a bunch of community organizations stepping up and businesses that are being recognized online, will go to the Minnesota One Hundred Club. So, thank you to that. The last thing I want to say is April fourth, an announcement came out with the Minnesota Twins today. They are gonna be doing a big tribute to Burnsville that a lot of Dakota County agencies are, are involved with to honor Officers Elmstrand, Rugian, firefighter Finseth. And we're in the Fast and Furious planning stages of that, but it's gonna be a pretty special event. I encourage everybody to watch on opening day. They've, they've got a pretty special tribute planned with a lot of our local first responders on the field during opening day ceremonies, fly over bagpipes, raising of the flag, a lot of cool stuff. So, I encourage you to watch that, and I think that's all I have.
Well, well, staff, are, a lot of our staff be there?
Yeah, so we're still, the, the Twins have donated right off the bat over five hundred tickets. And what we're doing right now is we're organizing, first and foremost, the Burnsville Police and Fire staff and their attendees. And then from there, we'll see what's left, and we will start distributing it out. But, yeah, it'll be primarily Burnsville and then Dakota County agencies that'll be there on the field that day, including our staff. Yep. We're gonna try to get those that responded that day there and in a spot. I think we're gonna have about a hundred of us holding the flag out in centerfield, and it should be a pretty special event. So.
Awesome.
Cool. Thanks.
To complete city staff updates, we'll move on to upcoming community calendar. These, let's see, we are on the nineteenth, so we're up to tomorrow eve, tomorrow afternoon, the youth commission will meet from three forty-five to four forty-five at the Steeple Center. The city council will have commission interviews on Thursday, March twenty-first, from five thirty to, this is eight thirty, I think it's nine o'clock, isn't it? About as many as we're interviewing?
It's not, not quite that late. Yep.
That's helpful. On Monday, March twenty-fifth, from five thirty to six thirty is the Utility Commission meeting here at City Hall. And then our next city council work session will be on April second, from five to seven PM, followed by city council meeting at seven to eight. And with that, if there's no other business to come before council, I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for watching.